This seat is awfully hot.
Yeah. It was warm.
Counselor Fair, do you have a few extra papers there by chance that you?
Did I take your papers too? I'm sorry. I paid one hundred.
All right, now we're back at it. Thank you to Counselor Fair. We'll now move to 11B and that's Brenda Brown from the Headway program. Brenda, I'll ask you to take the podium, state your name and address, and tell us why you're here, and I'll give you a few minutes to speak.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here this evening. My name is Brenda Brown, and I live in Steinbach. Do you want my exact street address?
That's all right.
Main Street.
Perfect.
I've lived in Steinbach for almost thirty years, and I have a huge heart for the community of Steinbach, and going a little bit more micro, I have a huge heart for hurting teenagers. I've been working with at-risk youth for over ten years in Steinbach, and just newly now working in, under the capacity of Headway. So I was just gonna tell you a little bit about our program, and yeah, here's a little... Okay. So Headway is a program that exists to support at-risk youth and their families. It's a brand-new program that is coming to Steinbach, or is in Steinbach. We started up as of January, and it's a multi-agency wraparound program that was initiated by the six agencies, the six main agencies that work with at-risk youth who live within our community. It's managed to support struggling youth and their family in order to help them. They're the largest consumers of often policing, CFS, and school-based issues. I have found in my years of working with at-risk youth, I usually just worked with the youth themselves, and we had an impact on those youth. But often I would meet a student, and I would think, "Man, I don't get you, I don't understand why you are where you are," and then I'd meet their parents, and I'd go, "Oh, I understand why you are where you are." And so for us to be able to impact the families, as well as the youth, will have a much more profound impact on our community. So the key to Headway is actually working with the parents and the youth, not just the youth, where we would be able to have them come to the table, to be able to share openly about their problems, their concerns, and their lack of resources. Because understanding the reason behind the behavior will help us to understand and increase the chances of success, while also decreasing the burden on social services. So Headway was built on a program that has been long established in Selkirk. The program there has been running, I believe, for fourteen years, and is very, very well-established. The success rate of the start program for the youth that they work with is eighty-five to ninety-five percent success rate of getting these kids stable, which is just astounding. The program that was running in Stonewall, within the first year, they had a fifty percent reduction in youth-related crime in the first year that they were running. There's five different programs running in the province apart from Selkirk. There's Thompson, Dauphin, Gimli, and us. The reason that they started it is that they just, they found that there needed to be a collaboration, you know, because CFS is working with the same student as the school is trying to deal with, as the RCMP officers are trying to deal with, but nobody can talk to each other, nobody knows really the full picture. All the school knows is that little Jimmy hasn't shown up for school, and they're frustrated, but meanwhile, he was in lockup last night. So this is our model. Before Headway was there, there was no line behind, between those circles, so we had these different agencies supporting one family and youth, but nobody could talk to each other. And it's very exhausting for families that are utilizing multi-agencies to be able to go and meet with all of these agencies. This is kind of a one-stop-shop. So what do we do? We bring agencies together with the youth and family to bring, to make appropriate plans. The agencies that Headway is involved with is the RCMP, Child and Family Services, the Hanover School Division, Mental Health, the Addictions Foundation, and the last one, I ran this, the School Division. We follow up on commitments by agencies, youth, and the family. Prior to Headway coming to Steinbach, they did try a collaborative approach to support at-risk youth and their family. It was without a coordinator, and they found that what was happening is exactly this point, is that there would be commitments made by agencies, or commitments made by the youth and their family, but nobody to hold them accountable. So one of the parts of my job is then to phone Child and Family Services and say, "You know, you said you were gonna work on getting a personal support worker for this youth. Has that happened?" "Oh, thanks for reminding me, it slipped my mind," or whatever it is, or the youth has promised to add an additional class to their repertoire, because they only had one class that they were attending to, so it would be my job, or somebody else on the team, to phone them to make sure that they're following through on that. We provide day-to-day support and agency referral, so I make sure once a week to phone the parents, check in on them, see if, what, if they need anything, and also agency referral. We're finding with this program that often there's unaddressed needs, usually in the case of mental health or the addiction. So if there is, if one of our clients, we're seeing them struggle, as a team, we would decide, "You know what, we're gonna make a referral to mental health." And again, it's kind of part and parcel of that. We advocate on behalf of the youth and family for appropriate services, such as mental health or addictions. We keep the file open until the youth has six months of stability. By stability, what we mean is that the at-risk youth hasn't contacted any of the involved agencies for six months, which means they are stable, and at that point, they would be eased out of our program. Not to say that if they had some issues come up again, they couldn't come back for support, but that is our definition of stability. How does it work? Our program is governed by a steering committee. The steering committee is made up of representatives from the agencies that are involved, and that, the steering committee decides, like, all the governing portions of the program. We also have a screening committee also made up of representatives from those agencies, and the screening committee is responsible to obviously screen the kids in, whether or not they're appropriate, and make those decisions, but they're also filled in on all the clients and what is going on with them, and making recommendations for referrals and support that way. The Headway program, in order to qualify, the youth need to be between the ages of twelve and nineteen. They need to be involved with three of the involved agencies, and they also need to be within the RM of Hanover area. That being said, at our last screening meeting, there was an application from a little boy who was ten years old, and he had, just with his application and all the things he was going through, our screening committee decided, rather than wait two years till he gets further down the road he's on, that we would accept him into our program. And in fact, there's a little boy in the Selkirk program who's eight. How are they referred? Anybody can refer a youth to this program. A youth could walk into my office and say, "Help me," and they could refer themselves. We still need parental consent if they're under the age, but anybody can refer a youth to our program. And again, the screening committee decides who gets into Headway. I do not, based on our criteria. And a youth can be a client as long as they need to be. Once they hit age twenty, then we would like to transition them out of our program into a more appropriate program for them. Our program is funded by the Hanover School Division, Child and Family Services, and the RM of Hanover at the moment, as well as a few others, small, smaller donations. The RCMP has also graciously given me an office space and a computer and a stapler, so that's really helpful.
We're generous.
This model works because collaborations are powerful, coming together and around these families and kids. They truly include the youth and the family. There's no judgment. In working with dysfunctional families, often there's a shame, and there's an embarrassment, and there's, they often feel like people are kind of picking on them, so we really try to provide an atmosphere of acceptance, and like, "How can we help you? What resources do you need?" And really loving the people. All the client's information is in one place, so I have a file with all the information from all the different agencies as much as we can, which just really helps out for the parents, as well as creating a really, a good picture of what's going on in this situation, not just one small piece of the puzzle. We're also on top of issues faster. There was a boy in Selkirk who was meeting with his social worker every month, and his social worker would ask, "How's school?" "School's fine." The next month, "How's school?" One of many questions, of course. "School's fine." They find out two months later that he wasn't actually in school, he was just saying, "The school is fine." So in the case of Headway, something like that couldn't happen, because we would be sharing information and in contact with each other. We also pool resources. For the school to get a forensic assessment, for example, of a student costs $1,200. Probations, it is included as part of their mandate, and so if we are meeting together as a group, and someone needs a forensic assessment, then we would be able to do that without having to incur the high cost. Fewer chances for manipulation, same kind of, oops, story about... Sorry. Yeah, and again, it belongs to everyone. This isn't a Hanover School Division thing, this isn't a show for me or the RCMP, this is a community thing, started by the agencies in our community. Just really quickly, there was an assessment done of the Selkirk program, and it's fascinating, and so they studied the program to see what the outcomes were. It was done by a professor at the University of Manitoba, and these are, I'll just skip through to the next slide, 'cause it's the same thing. These are statistics, so there was an eighty-one point six percent improved living situation for these kids, increased understanding of youth's challenges, attained a better knowledge of at-risk activities, was a hundred percent, like, that's just astounding, improved attendance and participation in school, eighty percent. We can read the rest of those, but it has a profound impact on struggling kids, for I'm not gonna read through all of this, but there's been a couple of studies done at just the cost of at-risk youth. And, you know, the question is, how many of these kids can be prevented before this program pays for itself? But just going down to the fifth point there, like, if a youth is, you know, a drug user and also a criminal, there can be savings if we can save that kid from going down the road, from one point seven to two point three million dollars, you know, that's, you know, loss from theft, that's prison time, that's CFS, that's RCMP, all of those different things. Those are just more stats. I think you all have them in front of you there if you wish to read them, but the cost is enormous. And the last point there is, one of the most important findings, however, is that although juvenile offending behavior accounts for a small fraction of the total cost, like, just when they're youth, if they can be prevented from becoming career criminals, the savings may be enormous. Giving to Headway is an investment, it's not an expense. These are our funding partners at the moment. So right now, our budget is set at roughly seventy thousand dollars. A lot of that has been donated, or eighteen thousand of that has been donated, gifts and kind from the Hanover School Division and from the RCMP. The Hanover School Division is our banker, and so they do all of our administration, they do all our financial operations, and then we've had other donations, but we are still currently looking for twenty thousand dollars. So we wanted to come before the city today and just ask whether or not you would be willing to contribute something to this program. We really feel like it's gonna have a very large impact on our community, on our youth, on our families, decrease crime, and even just the morale of our city.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Siemens.
You, Mr. Mayor. Welcome here, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I'm fine.
Three, keep in mind, you're talking about the youth at risk in the community. I understand that. I sat on the Youth Justice Committee for many years, so, and how do you connect to Youth Justice Committee backstage, to community outreach? These are all value-add programs in our community that aren't, you didn't talk about them, how you connect to them. Is there, there's those, and there's still others potentially? How do you connect to all those different agencies?
Yeah, it's a good question. I actually, I sit on the Steinbach Drug Awareness Council, and so there, there's representatives from some of those agencies that you mentioned, so I am in a relationship with them. We also utilize the Steinbach Community Outreach as a resource for some of our families, that I have that in my back pocket in case we need it. Excuse me, I'm also in contact with the workers at Youth for Christ fairly regularly. I actually just talked to them today, just in regards to some students and their bird's-eye view on that, because by no means do we wanna duplicate what anybody's doing. That's not our mandate at all, it's rather to enhance what's going on and to bring people together.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, thank you for the information. Obviously, you're doing very good work, and you're doing work that will improve our community, so thank you very much. As for the specific ask that you added at the end, we will have a response to you, which probably will include our policy and the guidelines around that, so.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
All right, counsel, we will now move to 7C, and that's the Staff Sergeant Harold You don't have to say your name and your address.
Excellent. We'll apologize for not having a PowerPoint, though. First of all, thanks very much, and I just wanna also encourage you, you know, as you deal with your processes, with Brenda's request, we're trying to make generational changes, and we're hoping that by affecting the kids of today, they're gonna become our future parents. We're hoping to make direct enroats to those kids, give them the skills they need as they become parents, and so you, we wouldn't have the Headway program, in my opinion, if it wasn't for the support of the city. You guys were on board immediately, through the RCMP Advisory Committee, both Susan and Carrie were instrumental in bringing it together, and I thank them for their support. So just, yeah, just respectfully request for your assistance now for the ringettes and keeping it going. Am I allowed to talk about this part? Was this the only other thing we mentioned, the RM of Hanover, is that if you could consider a sum that you could do yearly, because we're trying to, what we're trying to do is have a program in place that'll extend itself into the future. This isn't a one-year thing. To make this truly successful, we need to keep this going every year. So what we're, we asked the RM of Hanover to consider was a sum of money that they could provide every year, and that's all added to that.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our Staff Sergeant? We do have other information here. I don't know if you wanna answer any questions in regards to the occurrence stats that were provided for us?
Yes, I'm here for...
Are there any questions? Counselor Penner.
One, one in particular, looking at the occurrence statistics, and the provincial traffic offenses are significantly higher in 2015 than they were in 2014. Can you answer why that is?
I guess specifically, I've done a lot of whining, trying to get, and honestly, I've spoken to you in the past as part of the Advisory Committee, some of the issues with our traffic services, and the fact that the RCMP is doing some repositioning, and the RCMP, the traffic services is much reduced here in Steinbach right now. But I've had a lot of meetings at headquarters within our Winnipeg area, saying this area is the fastest-growing area in Manitoba. I've done, you know, studies on our traffic, and our traffic is right up there. If you look at the traffic between Steinbach and Blumenau, we have equivalent to average annual daily traffic, equivalent to the west, west number one, like, if you go past the Hedyly, or east of number one, if you go past the Red, so, or, yeah, the right turnoff. So those are the kind of numbers we're dealing with, approximately thirteen thousand a day. So because of that, because of unfortunately the fatalities we've had in our area, the accidents we've had, I've asked for increased patrols here, that is happening, and our own members are obviously also very cognizant of the issues, and they're working to achieve those goals also. So I think there is a marked increase, and I'm very glad to see that.
Thank you. Further questions? I do see very clearly that we stated that we wanted to see as priorities organized crime, drug use reduction, also property offenses and so on, and when we see that, that we created that, in 2014, we suggested that that's where we wanted to head, and then when you look at 2015, and what has gone on there, between 2014, 2015, we see very, we see significant decreases in both drug enforcement issues, we see a decrease in thefts by more than half, and we see vehicle thefts more than half as well. Are those all interrelated with the work that has been done to reduce the drug use and so on, and enforcement?
I believe so. I think, again, I think counsel's been very supportive in giving us a two-person GIS unit, and I think because of that, we've been able to make the enrollments we can. There's been several times over the past few years that I've said, "I don't know what we would do if it wasn't for a GIS unit," because of the nature of the files they're taking on, and I think you've probably seen in the paper some of the work that they have done, and it's ongoing. You know, I think there's no surprise to anyone here that there is a meth issue in Steinbach right now, and I think you're seeing that some of the vandalism, or what I call the minor thefts and mischiefs have gone up because of that, but we directly targeted that, and I think now we're starting to see a reduction because of the work that was done, so I'm glad to see the stats reflect that, yes.
Anything further? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Workinteen, do you also need a resolution in regards to our, page seven, we have the recommendation, or the community priority issues stated there?
Yes, the, there is information that has been provided showing what the resolution of council had chosen as its performance plan priorities in the past review. If council is satisfied with those priorities as they are listed, they could issue another resolution to confirm. If they wish to change, they could also do so.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Funk?
Wish to confirm.
Confirmed. Seconded by Counselor Swagster. Go ahead.
No, we really are very thankful for RCMP, they're in our community, and you're doing a great job, we're very, very thankful for you. We'd like to see you more, more in our community, do more, and we've seen the benefits of what you're doing. We ask you just to continue, and going along with these priorities that we've approved, it just sounds the way to go. So thank you very much, great job.
Thank you. Counselor Swagster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll certainly support the comments, and we're very appreciative of the work that the RCMP does in our community. These priorities are good. It makes sense that we continue to go after organized crime, we want visibility to the police to continue dealing with property crimes, and also traffic. These are important areas, these are areas that are an issue in a growing city like ours, and so we appreciate the work the RCMP does in this regard. It's also good to hear that the GIS unit is being put to good use, we all knew it would be, and that, creating the GIS unit, that's one of those areas that it wasn't hard to get unanimous agreement among council, and support in community amongst organizations. That is very valuable, to have a dedicated, dedicated group of officers that are able to spend focused time dealing with some of these larger crime issues. So these are good priorities, and we definitely wanna continue moving in this direction.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? Counsel, I think we've seen clearly the good work the RCMP is doing. The quarterly report, we see some marked success, let's continue to see that. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We'll now move to 8B, and that is the Old Tom Road Improvement Tender Award information, and we have that followed, that is followed in your package. We now have, Mr. Workinteen, can I ask you to introduce this information, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a recommendation for tender award package for the asphalt surfacing of Old Tom Road in 2016. The tender for this project closed March 24th, 2016, with six bids received. The recommendation by the project-engineered ACOM Canada is to award the tender on a reduced-scope basis to Betuminex Paving LTD, and that information is attached. That also concurs with management's recommendation to award a reduced-scope tender. The low tender from Betuminex was actually listed at one million fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. That amount with the estimated engineering and design costs of about forty thousand will bring the total project cost estimates to approximately two hundred thousand dollars over what budget funding is approved for, for 2016, and therefore, the recommendation is that the actual tender award to Betuminex be reduced to meet the city's available budget at value of approximately eight hundred and seventy-five thousand for the actual work. That will allow sufficient budget room to allow for all the additional costs with respect to engineering and design to reach the max of one million dollars.
Thank you. How would counsel like to proceed? Counselor Siemens.
I would, due to the fact that we only got this information today, and we are over budget, I would like to make a recommendation that we push this decision to the next meeting, do we get further information, possible areas that we can recover funds.
So you're suggesting we table this? Mr. Workinteen, what is our timeline for approving?
Standard tender award does have a sixty-day award period.
Which would bring us to?
Roughly the end of May.
Thank you. So there's a move to table, seconded by Counselor Fair. Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
I think this information was in our package today, and since the dollar figure is, exceeded the amount that we've approved under our budget, we need to either find funds or reject this project altogether. I'm not in favor of rejecting the project, but I'd like to look for, get feedback from, further feedback from administration, and we can see where potentially we could find additional funds to complete this plan.
Thank you. Counselor Fair? Anything further from counsel?
Anything in closing? Counsel, obviously, we see this as a priority, a project for us. It is slightly over budget. Cutting back the scope, I think, is one option that we have, and it continues to be an option for us as we move forward, but looking at the project and having simply a small section where it isn't complete seems a bit, doesn't seem like the direction that we should be heading. So I think taking our time, asking for more information, looking for possibility of saving a few dollars or finding dollars in a different part of the budget, reallocating, I think, is appropriate, so we will, I feel comfortable tabling this, and we will also ask administration to come up with some ideas, and we will work on those together.
Call for the question, all those in favor of tabling. Thank you. We have the land purchase 8C, 736 Hanover, on page nineteen. Mr. Workinteen?
This is a parcel of land located at 376 Hanover Street. The strategy that city council has directed administration to follow for many years has been to assemble parcels of land in the area for future development as parcels become available. This parcel fits that criteria, and as such, along with the appraised value report that was provided by the accredited appraisal, the city has made an offer for the same value to the current owner for the amount of two hundred and five thousand dollars, and that offer has been tentatively accepted, subject to council's approval. Management is recommending that the offer to purchase be approved.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Would approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Swagster. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this lot on 376 Hanover will continue our practice and our direction with purchasing land in this area. In our official community plan, it also fits as well, using this land for a variety of uses. So this is what we have done in the past, we've set this direction. I feel it is only prudent to continue to do this as part of our planning development process.
Thank you. Counselor Swagster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support the motion. As has been mentioned, the city's been purchasing properties in this area, in the downtown area in particular, for over two decades now. It's been a long-term process, because as the city grows, there are, there are times where we know that there are going to be needs for what the city may do with the land in that area. There's any number of things that could be used for. The city, we may hold on to the property for some time, and we have the opportunity of keeping the house there in terms of rental, and as has happened with our property, until a decision is made in terms of what happens with the property, but it makes sense for the city to continue with its long-term strategy.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Siemens?
Mr. Mayor, I won't vote in favor of the motion. I think that these are starter homes that we're taking off the market, that these are fixer-upers for first-time homeowners in our downtown location, and... fixer-upsters for first-time homeowners in our downtown location, and while the city has had a policy of buying up a lot of these lots, I think it's been, only been in the last 10 years that they've been buying them on this side of Hanover. This is still a transitional zone in our community plan, and I feel it's not right for the city to be buying these properties when there's no plan in place.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, we, there has been a longstanding process of purchasing land in this area. We do have, if, including this one, if this purchase proceeds, there will be four of five lots that are owned by the city along that stretch. Whatever the plan, whatever transpires in that area, it does increase the value of those other lots substantially as you, as you put these lots together. So, I think it's only prudent to proceed.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. All right, we have 9A, we have accounts payable in the back of the book, your green tab. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Funk? Seconded by Counselor Penner? Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We have the financial statement ending January in the back of the book as well, in your yellow tab. Thank you. Counselor Siemens. Seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? We have February as well, in the back of the book. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Penner? Seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We have the financial plan on page 23. Mr. Workinteen, just to summarize, please?
Yes, the, with the financial plan public hearing that was scheduled and held earlier this year in February, city council passed a resolution to adopt in principle the city's 2016 financial plan. Information received from the province of Manitoba and the Hanover School Division has now been received with respect to the annual school tax requirements. Those required collections and payments have now been entered into the plan, and council may now proceed to give formal adoption to the 2016 financial plan in its entirety.
Sorry, Mr. Workinteen, which page is that?
That can be found on page 23.
It is on page 23, okay.
And there is a draft resolution on that page as well.
Yeah, thank you. All right, counsel? Counselor Swagster, you move to approve? Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a good financial plan when we approved it in principle a few months ago, and it remains a good financial plan now. There's a lot of things that are happening in the city in terms of our infrastructure and continuing to put money aside for various things and having a net zero increase. So, those are all good things, and it's, they remain good things now.
Thank you. Counselor Penner?
No further comment.
Anything further from counsel? Anything in closing? You don't want to change it to find that money for Old Tom Road? Quickly? All right. We have already approved this in principle, and we have it in front of us. Counsel, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. We'll move to 9E, and that's the bylaw 2062, 2016 Realty Education Tax Levy on page 42. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Need a first and second reading. Move first reading?
Move first reading.
Thank you, Counselor Penner. Seconded by Counselor Siemens. Any discussion?
No.
Any further discussion from counsel? Seeing none, call for the question on first reading. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Counselor Penner, I didn't see your hand. Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not supposed to.
Thank you. That is unanimous, just to be clear. Motion for second reading, Counselor Fair? No, you don't want to move for second reading. Counselor for second reading. Counselor Funk? Thank you. Seconded by Counselor, there's six of you. Counselor Siemens? Any discussion? Any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We have bylaw 2063, Business Tax Levy on page 47. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner, move first reading?
Move first reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion?
This continues our practice of 0.5% business tax levy.
Thank you. Anything further from counsel? Call for the question. All those in favor of first reading? Carried. Second reading, please. Counselor Swagster? Counselor Funk? Any discussion? Anything further from counsel? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. We now move to 9G, subdivision 4451, 2015, 7651. This is condominium plan on page 51. Mr. Workinteen?
This particular subdivision application is file 2015-7651, with civic address of 236 Park Road West. Purpose of the subdivision application is to create a bareland condominium subdivision consisting of 16 industrial purpose lots. The bareland condo plan will be required to comply with all city requirements as it pertains to the light industrial zone. Recommendation is that city council approve the subdivision for the bareland condo prior to the execution of the development agreement.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Yes, this application is to, is proposing an industrial bareland condominium, and I think it's a very good thing for the city. I am very comfortable with the information about the bareland condominium and how it's proposed to go forward. It will meet all city specs, and it falls within all of the requirements of our zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion from counsel? Counsel, I think it is, it's important to note that this is the, this is a bareland condominium, and it is happening on the old campsite, and so we're just, so that we are aware of that. This is a transition from what it is being used to where it is going. All right, any further discussion? I know this isn't a public hearing, I'm sorry.
Any chance for a comment?
Yes. No, sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be, no.
I found it brought to my attention that some of the answers are out, and so we will, we want to go forward with this application, but we will not promote construction until that, because some of the issues are here.
All right, we will ignore, ignore that comment, because we have protocol to follow, but you got me. Anything further from counsel? Seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. We have 9H, subdivision bylaw 4451, 2011, 5410. This is page 69. Mr. Workinteen?
This is further application for subdivision, file number 2011-5410, and that is actually a property located at the extension of Lund Road, just south of the Mid-Canada Millwork property. Purpose is to create this bareland residential condominium subdivision with 14 buildings and consisting of 56 lots. The, this file relates to a file council recently gave third reading to with respect to rezoning by law 2015, 2015, which had been outstanding for some time. The recommendation is to approve.
All right. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens?
Wish to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
This has had a long history, this development. I think it was before the municipal board for a while, there was objections to it, and those, so it's been, I think it was three years ago when it was in council for the first time, but make most approve it. It does create, is a buffer between the current residence and the industrial park, but it is additional housing, but it is condominium style, bareland condominium, so it's always not believed as clear and snow and dark.
Thank you. Counselor Penner?
Just to add to Counselor Siemens' comments, we've had success in the city with bareland condominium residential development, so I think that will be a very good thing.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Fair, please.
I've got a question of administration. Do we ever have any concerns from any of the bareland condos? I know the comments are here. Do we ever have people that complain about the lack of snow removal because it's a bareland condo, or do any, do people express that at all, or?
When they do, they are directed to the condo association, which takes care of those services within the development.
They do come up from time to time?
On occasion, they do ask questions, yes.
Anything further from counsel? Counselor Siemens, you're anything in closing?
Counsel, it's good to see this moving ahead. This is something that's been on the books for quite some time. This is a number of units that people can purchase, and I suspect they'll, as they're condominiums, they'll be reasonably priced, and so they'll either be starter homes or places where people can, that are at least affordable, and so look forward to this coming to fruition in that location.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. All right, we will move to 9I, the appointment of a weed inspector on page 87. Mr. Workinteen, any comments?
There, no, this is a routine requirement under the Noxious Weeds Act. Recommendation is for city council to appoint Mr. Trevor Schellenberg, the Community Services Officer, as the city's weed inspector again for the coming year.
Thank you. Just before we proceed, another question, and that is the changes that the provincial government made, which eliminates the use of herbicides on lawns, does that affect this supervisor's job?
I would say indirectly. However, under the Noxious Weeds Act, there are still provisions that, if permitted under the act, the necessary herbicides to control noxious weeds can be applied under certain conditions.
Very limited.
Very limited.
Counselor Siemens?
Do you, Mayor, to administration, is there any training requirements in order to conduct the inspector?
Yes, I believe there is an annual certification program to be able to carry out those duties.
This is a dandy line. Get rid of it. All right, I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Penner. Seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion?
No.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Okay. So, that is a very important job. I don't want to make light of it. 9J, we have the 2016 Emergency Plan Amendments on page 88. Mr. Workinteen?
This information is provided by the city's Emergency Measures Coordinator, Mr. Dennis Vassert, on an annual basis. He did conduct a review of the city's emergency plan. The recommendations that he is suggesting are listed on page 88. The amendments that are there are minor in nature, more so just to clarify. However, council resolution is required to adopt them.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swagster?
I would like to motionally approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These emergency plan amendments look like they make sense.
Thank you. Anything further?
It's already been said.
Call for the question. All those in favor? We have a motion to cancel the April 19 regular council meeting, that is the election night council meeting. Counselor Penner?
So moved.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion? Anything from counsel? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Questions of counsel? Seeing none. 11A, we have the Jacob Library Minutes on page 89. Take that as information. We have 11B, the St. Rettre Conservations District Minutes on page 93. Any questions? Take that as information. We have the Minister of Heritage in regards to Celebrate Canada Program on page 101. Any questions?
I'm reading to you now.
We will then move to 11D, and that's the additional letter that we received from the Steinbach Arts Council letter. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll take that as information. We have other business, and that is Counselor Penner wishes to bring a resolution forward.
Yes, I'll have it out, and then if I get a seconder, then I'll make my comments.
All right, so you move this resolution?
I'm making a motion. Be it resolved that the city of Steinbach adopt the following principles for future recreation planning. Number one, the city recognizes that a multiplex is not financially feasible at this time. Number two, the city shall continue planning for a performing arts center in the downtown area, provided adequate parking is made available and financial support comes in from other levels of government. Number three, at least 10% of the total capital costs of the performing arts center must be raised from private contributions. Number four, the city shall look to secure sufficient land for a future spectator arena in a non-downtown location. Number five, the city shall continue dedicating 1.241 mils of taxation to the Recreation Reserve each year.
All right, thank you. Is there a seconder? Counselor Swagster? Go ahead.
Over the past five and a half years, the mayor and council have considered recreation renewal in Steinbach a priority. Early on in our first term, the topic of a multiplex came up. Since then, the mayor and council have spent considerable time and money commissioning studies and looking into the feasibility of a multiplex for Steinbach. And what has been made abundantly clear is that a multiplex is not feasible for Steinbach. An MN and P study from 2012 put the price tag of a multiplex at over $100 million, and in 2014, a STANTEC study presented us with a price tag of over $71 million for a multiplex. A community our size that takes in only $13 million per year in taxation simply cannot afford the financing or the operating costs of these projects without massive tax increases, and this is assuming we receive two-thirds funding from other levels of government, which is highly unlikely. So, it is time for council to put the multiplex discussion to rest and move in a new direction regarding recreation planning, one that is realistic and affordable. Our master plan should not be a building, but should be a broader vision for recreation in the community. What does this mean going forward? The motion confirms that the Performing Arts Center will still be moving ahead, provided we receive money from other levels of government. It also includes the task force recommendation of requiring that 10% of the total project cost must be privately raised. Projects like this cannot move ahead without private support. The motion indicates that we will actively seek additional land at a non-downtown location for a future spectator arena. This will allow private groups to already begin planning for this project, and if a new arena comes to fruition sometime in the future, the existing arenas, from one option at least, it would be for the existing arenas to be retrofitted for court sports and/or soccer. This would, this would cost dramatically less than building everything in a new greenfield location. So, instead of preventing future recreation, ending the multiplex discussion actually gives clearer direction on how recreation projects can be phased in. The motion affirms the 1.241 mils of taxation that currently go into the Recreation Reserve and that they will continue, so we can continue to save for large projects such as a curling rink and performing arts center, as well as have money available for small, high-impact projects such as a splash park and bush form pathway. In conclusion, by putting the multiplex conversation to rest, we can finally move forward with a realistic and affordable recreation vision for Steinbach. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Swagster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to second the motion, and I want to start out by just highlighting one key number. And the key number I want to highlight is $13 million. That is how much money the city takes in in tax revenue each year. That's what we get from our property taxes. So, when we're talking about our budgets and what we're spending on, all of that, we are using $13 million. With that $13 million, we have to set priorities, and one of the things that we have done over the last few years, we've done a lot of research, a lot of investigation, we have looked into various multiplex options, and as Counselor Penner had- And as Counselor Penner had mentioned, we had an M&amp;P study back in 2012 that suggested a multiplex that was over $100 million and to locate that at AD Penner Park. And you consider the size of that, that even if we got two-thirds funding, and I do not think we would get two-thirds funding, I do not think it is realistic to expect that we would receive the equivalent of $67 million or more from the other levels of government for a project of that nature. Even if we got that, that still leaves the city having to borrow $33 million or possibly even more. Work that out. Even if you put the debt term over twenty years, that still requires a tax increase because it's an annual debt payment of $2.4 million for the next twenty years. Consider that the money we're putting into the rec reserve is the equivalent of about $1.1 million. So that's assuming, best-case scenario, two-thirds funding, other levels of government, long-term debt, and you still have a massive tax increase. Think how much larger that is. You have a shorter debt period, or we don't get two-thirds funding. We got fifty percent. Now we're borrowing 50 million. That's one example. Last year, we had STANTEC architects do another study and came up with an option that was in the range of approximately $71 million. Again, still very high numbers when you consider that we take in $13 million in tax revenue every year. That's what we have to work with. Now fortunately, we are not stopping our progress in regards to recreation, far from it. What the motion does is it states a few things. It states clearly that we're going to keep putting money into our recreation reserve. It's a significant allotment that that money is going to continue because that means that we now have the option that gives us possibilities for what we can do in the future. That is over and above our regular recreation spend, just so that we're clear. We are going to continue with planning for a performing arts center. And we're specifying, as was recommended by the task force, that it will be in the downtown area, provided we have adequate parking and provided that we have adequate financial support from other levels of government. And ten percent total capital cost must be raised in private contributions. I think those are reasonable numbers. And those are things that it's obviously dependent upon. But we are prepared to be able to move forward with that. Should be noted as well that we're stating and looking at securing sufficient land for a future spectator arena in a non-downtown location. We've done a lot of studies and a lot of work, and we've had a lot of feedback. And certainly one thing that I've heard loud and clear is that when the time comes for a new spectator arena, it doesn't work to put it downtown because we find it inappropriate to put it there. So let's acknowledge that. Let's say that it's not going to go there. It's going to go in a different location. It's just that simple. And so what we need to do is we need to be straightforward. We need to say, this is what we have done. We've done research. We have a variety of plans that we've gathered. And there's a reason that we haven't officially adopted the plans we've received so far. It's because they're outside the city's budget range. We all know that. That's why they haven't been adopted to this point. So that does not mean that we stop planning in regards to recreation, but it does mean that we stop the planning for a large multiplex that is outside the feasibility of the city. Recreation remains a priority. Affordable recreation is a priority. Just to point out a few things we've done for recreation over the last six years or so. We have a new curling rink, and that happened in conjunction with a deal that was made with the credit union. We have a splash park that was recently constructed beside the J-Cap Library. Very positive, a lot of great use. Bush Farm Pathway, the washrooms and change rooms are currently being constructed at the Steinbeck Soccer Park. The BMX Jump Park that's going to be constructed at AD Penner Park. These are positive things. Those are some examples, some of the things that we're doing in terms of recreation. And we intend to continue doing things like that. So we're going to move forward in a positive way. We're going to move forward by acknowledging what we are not able to do, but also emphasizing what we are able to do. Because even though we only take $13 million in tax revenue every year, there are still a lot of things we can do. This does not stop recreation. It does not stop moving forward. It does send us in the direction of stating that here's what we can do and here's some things that we cannot do. So I'm in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Fair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question in regards to number two, regarding adequate parking. We just made a motion to buy another parcel on Hanover. And I'm just curious if I could know how many parking stalls does the properties that we potentially, that we own in that section give us at the current time? What's the possibility of parking stalls?
Mr. Workinteen, if you can answer that, please.
I can take an estimated guess. There's plus or minus about a dozen residential properties that the city has now purchased over time that remain vacant. With the average size, they would be able to develop plus or minus 400 parking stalls.
That is a very, very important component of this motion for me. And the reason I want to know that is because I believe that as a council, we need to lead by example. And we need to live by the same bylaws that we expect our taxpayers to. If we expect our taxpayers to provide parking for, you know, for a thousand people and for persons per car, then that's what we need to do as well. So we've, as was mentioned here, much discussion has taken place on this issue over the last six years. When we started this discussion, it was labeled a multiplex, which probably was not a very good choice of words. We committed to start, post-renewing our recreation and cultural facilities. And we already completed the first phase, which was a curling rink. And now we're moving to a phase two, which we committed to last year when we decided the next step would be the performing arts center. And the survey we just completed is quite clear. People feel we should build this facility downtown, providing we have sufficient parking, which is why I had the question. I might add that we need to consider the arena that we have there right now, too, because if we have a thousand people there and we have 800 people, that means there's 1,800 people. If we have four, then we're taxed. We need more than that. So I believe that it's very important that we lead by example and that we follow our bylaws to the T, just like we expect everybody else in the community to do that, so.
Counsel, with your permission, may I speak before either of you? All right. I think we've all put a lot of effort into multiplex planning, recreation and cultural facility planning over the last number of years. It's not only taxing, but it's taxing. It takes a toll. And I would acknowledge the work that you've all done. But I really feel as though we're out, see the finish line just ahead of our planning process, and we're abandoning it. We had a clear resolution a year ago that said what the first phase was that we're going. But in addition to that, it also said very clearly that we're going to continue the master planning process so that we have a blueprint of where we're heading, a vision of where we're heading. That's what we were doing. That's what we've been all working towards over the last five and a half years. We've had ebbs and flows. There's been times when we haven't agreed. But this is the direction that we've been going. And I feel today as though we see that finish line and we're not getting there. We're deciding, you know what, let's drop, let's drop the baton and move on. There may well be merit in the direction that part of this resolution goes, but we haven't finished the plan. We have an M&amp;P report that gives us two options. We have a few of our other STANTEC reports that give us other options. We know they're flawed. We acknowledge that. There's problems with them. But that's part of the process, is finding those problems, putting it together, piling it up, and saying, okay, now what can we make of this work that we've done so far? How can we get a better project out of this? I think that's where we should be going. We have a lot of work that we've done. The other aspect is the whole idea of splitting things up, which this does, and putting it all together under one roof. That's been an ongoing discussion. I think we can all acknowledge that putting things close together under one roof, sharing services, could be a huge benefit for us. And we've looked at that. We've tried to do that, even with some of our studies that we have. It's worth looking at and continuing to look at. It's worth finishing what we started. This motion also here limits us in a very crucial time. We have a federal government that is ready to invest in infrastructure, not just hard infrastructure, which is incredibly important and we're very good at, but the social infrastructure that we're talking about here, the meeting places that we're trying to create for our city. We have a government that is just ready to pour millions and billions of dollars into this. And we're limiting what we can even ask for. We can ask for an art center, and we actually already have. Hopefully, we're going to get our portion. But now's the time to be making sure that we have a bigger plan, a bigger vision that we can ask for, that we can put forward to see if we can't get our fair share of those tax dollars that are going to be spent somewhere in this country, and they should be spent in Steinbeck. We're missing an opportunity. We have private contributors that are desperate to see just a master plan. Show us that master plan. And we're almost there. We want more work to do. And if they see that master plan, they'd tell me, and I believe them, that they will invest. I think we're missing the mark on that. I understand council wants to move forward. I do, too. We all do. I think the community does. They always want to see a plan. And that's why I think we should be going about it in a different way. I think we should be compiling what we have. I think we should be compiling it and saying clearly that here are some of the deficiencies of these plans. Give us some options. Let's try, and let's not give up on the efficiency of putting things under one roof. And let's make sure that we don't discount the downtown for under one roof, but let's also make sure we say, you know what? AD Penner Park at Greenfield somewhere is an option, too. I think the project should be able to be built in phases, and that's part of what we should be looking for. All buildings of the project should be planned under one roof, if possible. First phase should be performing arts center, just like we said. Let's honor what we said. But let's honor what we said when it comes to a master planning process. I've said it here many times. I've said it here over the last year. I said it here two weeks ago. There should be land set aside for a future hotel and convention space. That's part of the plan. There should be adequate parking, like Counselor Fair says, absolutely. Access, egress, walkability, these are all things that we can put in there. I think we should also consider the third plan, the third option. And the third option is kind of what you're suggesting here, is putting it in two spots. And let's look at the merit of that. But let's also look at it in a constructive way. If there's going to be savings when it comes to operating, if we don't, or if there's going to be additional costs for us if we do it in the dual vision approach, like we might talk about this. But let's ask those questions. Let's have that information in front of us. Let's take a little extra time in moving forward. Take a few, couple more months. We've spent five and a half years. I can't support the motion. Counselor Penner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been quite a journey for this council as we've begun the process of exploring a multiplex or a master plan so many years ago. We have all seen the numbers. We have all looked at the studies. We have numerous studies that give us the numbers and give us the possibilities and give us so many different scenarios. But I believe today that this motion is a master plan. This motion actually is realistic. It's not pie in the sky. It's something that this city can do. It also is based on very realistic projections of federal and provincial funding. Let's be realistic. We can't move ahead on plans and dreams and visions. We need concrete numbers. We need concrete plans. And this motion is concrete. This motion is realistic. This motion can actually happen for our city in a very fiscally responsible way. And that's number one for me. Thank you.
Counselor Fair. Er, fun, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've looked at this motion. I've read this motion now, and I've heard the discussion. And I don't know if I can add a lot of new stuff. But, Mr. Mayor, this motion does give us flexibility. This motion, I agree with Counselor Penner, is a master plan.